Yep, come on in.
Perfect.
Okay, you record? All right, good evening, everyone. It is 6:30, evening of June 7th. This is a regular meeting of the Arlington City Council. I'm Mayor Rich Nagel, and I will be presiding. I will call a meeting to order, and please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll have a roll call. Councilmember Batchor.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Bus.
Here.
Councilmember Sharpie.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
All councilmembers present, also at the table on my left is City Administrator Amy Newsom. I don't know, is Ross going to be with us this evening?
He didn't say he wasn't.
He didn't say he wasn't, so he may be coming yet, Attorney Arnison. So with that out of the way, I will ask for the agenda additions. Are there any?
I have two additions to the agenda, and I will call into the consent agenda, approve the off-sale, on-sale, and Sunday liquor permits for the Arlington House, and accept a grant, this is on the table, and if you want to accept a grant from Southern Minnesota Regional Trauma for Stop the Bleed, and help me out $150 for the Arlington ambulance.
Good evening, Ross.
Motion to approve the agenda with the additions noted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Sharpie, to approve the agenda with the additions noted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. All right, moving down to the consent agenda. Item four, consisting of the following items. Item A, approval of the bills. Item B, approval of May 17th, 2021, city council workshop minutes. Item C, approval of May 17th, 2021, city council minutes. Item D, approve hiring of Brody Service as seasonal employee in Public Works at a wage of $12.50 an hour. Item E, approve off-sale, on-sale, Sunday, and community center liquor licenses for Arlington dugout, LLC. Item F, accept resignation of Dave Welsh from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Item G, accept resignation of Arianna Emmons from the Arlington Area Ambulance. Item H, approve the on-off liquor license for Arlington House. And then lastly, item I, approve the donation from Southern Minnesota, it's a grant, I'm sorry, grant from Southern Minnesota Foundation, SMART Foundation, in the amount of $150 for Stop the Bleed campaign, and that would be used for the ambulance fund. All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Bus, to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Item five, addressing the council. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to address the council?
Monica Sinsois from Southern Minnesota Regional Trauma.
Go ahead. You're on the agenda a little later, I believe, so.
Okay, sorry, this is my second time, I'm not.
Okay.
Continue on.
No problem, no problem. No, you're on, I'm not even sure, but.
Under new business.
Under new business, yeah. So you'll have a little bit of a wait.
Great.
Okay. Okay, moving on then to announcements. Item six, there are none, I can tell. Item seven, communications.
I've included a copy of the May 19th Community Center Committee minutes, so they are unapproved, but I did want you to see a copy of the minutes. I was not at that meeting, so I will rely on Joan or something on the agenda coming up later, and I'm going to ask you to speak about that, since I was not at the meeting.
Okay. Yes, we will talk about that later, and item number 17. Okay. Move on to reports. Item A.
April report from Public Service. If you have any questions on that, please let me know. I will ask Lee Orloff if there's anything that needs to be explained.
Okay, anything that anyone has noticed? Right, go ahead. Go ahead.
Next is public works report, Kirby.
Kirby?
Now it is.
Now it is. Okay, well, I guess last month, I finished up bidding a lot of street work, which they've done quite a bit already. Gap Mastic was done, which I was really happy with. That looks really good. They did a really nice job. They're going to finish up crack filling streets pretty soon, and then we'll be on the chip ceiling. So yeah, it's been a lot of coordinating with contractors, getting things lined up. We had Memorial Weekend last week, so there was a lot of detail to do in our parks, our cemetery landscape, the columbarium, and it rocks around that, and a couple shrubs that had died off. So we got that looking good, and I thought the cemetery looked good, and the parks looked pretty good, so kudos to all my guys who work hard on that. I don't know what I wrote there. Oh, several parties at the parks in the last few weeks to clean up before and after, so that's kind of kept us busy. Been starting to do some weed spraying, Main Street downtown. I did last week, the sidewalks, and then kind of along the streets there. And then this week, I hope to start on the streets and the tractor, and then try to continue on in parks and stuff like that, to limit our weed whipping that we have to do. Trying to keep up on watering trees we planted last year along Clinton, and some plants that Larry Gizecki actually was nice enough to plant for us this year at the North City Side. He got that looking pretty good. And also kind of worked with him on lining up, getting a water hydrant in our Memorial Park for their, Guy Bell is going to install that, the water line. Larry has the water fountain, and that'll be a part of the memory garden in Memorial Park. Finished up spreading wood chips in parks. Had our curb replacement work was done. Of course, before that, we had a couple trees to take out that were busting up the curbs real bad, so then we had those ground out. Got all those cleaned up, and I'm in the works yet of backfilling all the curbs and restoring the boulevards. We got our flower pots placed uptown. Arlington Conquerors take care of five of those pots, and then Arlington House has two of them. It's nice of them to do that. And got the uptown flower bed of Main Street. Added some soil and tilled it up. That's planted, too. Other than that, kind of been trimming, a lot of trimming in parks and properties. We jetted a couple slow-draining storm drains that we found after the last rains we had. I added some pesticide, mosquito pesticide, to our storm ponds, so hopefully that helps kill off mosquito larvae. And I imagine I'll be spraying probably in the near future, because it seems like there's a few of them coming out already. We had Jerpy in town to repair a couple water boxes and a manhole. Hot Patch Crew was busy last week. I think, pretty sure they're finished up. I mentioned Bargain will be in town finishing up crack filling, and then they'll be back to do some infrared patching. The EMS HVAC, kind of had a time getting them scheduled, but so next Monday, they're supposed to be here getting those mini splits put in, the EMS.
Oh, yeah.
I got Krantz lined up to come in after that, get electrical put in, so that can get running. I think they're starting to cook in there, or they are cooking.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry about that. I really wish that could have went quicker.
It's okay, it's all right.
So thanks for being a good sport. Compost has been busy. People seem to use that a lot. Still waiting on Herman's landscaping to get here and chip that. They're going to do that for free. Haven't heard back from them, but try to touch base again soon. Streets could use to be swept again, so that's coming up. Mosquito, there's always tree work, hopefully to get to. Yeah, I guess, I mean, that's probably enough. So, any questions, or?
Give us an update on the tree tree giveaway?
Oh, the trees, yes, of course. That's Thursday, this Thursday, June 10th, we, I picked those up. And then we'll work on getting that scheduled. So.
That would be the trees for the individual property owners on their own property?
Right, yeah.
How about street light on Main Street, the four-way stop? Is that taken care of now? I didn't even notice.
Yep, that was taken care of.
Found some defective wiring, or what?
I'd have to call and ask again. I was just happy it was running.
Yeah, yeah.
It's been working good, so.
And then one last thing on the, out of the dump site, the mulch pile. Does that eventually decompose to the point where you just have to, I mean, it's not usable for mulch for anybody to pick up? It's just, turns into dirt?
Yeah, it does. It's slow, but I pick through it a little bit sometimes and grab stuff out of the middle and add it to the compost pile.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it turns into a real fluffy, yeah, compost.
Yeah, because there's, tends to be a lot there, a lot more than people use.
Somebody recently picked up a bunch. It just seems to always get to a point, and then somebody comes along and, Joel, come get some more.
Well, the best stuff is from dead trees, and you don't get any green, you know, green stuff, or leaves, or anything.
Yeah. Yeah, there is some good.
Good.
Good veins of compost, yeah. Try to keep that open, available.
All right, any other things for Kirby?
Yeah, I was going to ask you when, I don't believe it was Bargain, but when they were paving and doing patching over on First Avenue, and they left that paper sitting along First Ave, right by Four Seasons Park, right on the corner.
Yeah. Okay.
They had it, they didn't mark it overnight, they didn't put any reflective marking on it. Do we, as a city, like in a contract that we sign with them for public safety, do we say, hey, you gotta mark your stuff if you're going to leave it sitting on the street overnight? Add it over as far as they could.
Was that over the weekend they did that, or when was that? Or last week, I suppose?
It was last week, yeah, I drove past it, too, and I noticed that.
Yeah. And then the other thing I was going to ask you, it was, I wrote it down, but when they went and they did the augering and the cutting on Chandler.
Okay.
I believe it was Friday when I come past.
Yeah, up here.
And when they cut it, they left six, eight inches of bituminous piled up. And I know when I came back the next day to my in-laws, it was still sitting there.
Okay. Like unused bituminous, a little pile?
Yeah, all they did is they, when they went, they did their line cuts. You can see where the bit just dumped it out. Yeah, they left, they did their cuts, and that was it.
Okay. Well, I know, okay, that was Thursday they did that?
I believe it was. It was cut, because I think they finished it up on Friday. Yeah, because they, everyone was kind of getting the gist of coming through and whatnot. And I know normally when county and state and stuff like that do that, either we scoop it up, pick it up right away, or take a 10-cent road cone and throw it out by it, just in case if something would happen.
Okay.
Just say, hey, we put a cone by it, why didn't you see the cone?
I can relay that stuff, though.
Just, you know.
I usually touch base again with.
Yeah, it's not the end of the world.
The Hot Patch guys, I'll talk, talk to the manager guy again.
Yeah, because the one night when he had stopped, I come up, and he was down over towards Clinton, and I talked to him for a little bit. But other than that.
Okay.
They were, it was.
I can politely mention that, that the next time they.
It was like five or six o'clock, and you could see it was a fire sale to get out of there.
Yeah, sure. Hot, and then I'll, Bargain, too, I'll be talking with him yet, so I'll mention something about that.
Well, I met him later on Friday. I was heading towards such a set, I had kind of drove down there, and they were grinding it that time. They had it all done Friday. Friday when I came home, they were just finishing up, and they had papers. They had all of the ones gone. It was a Thursday night, yeah, they made their square, and that was it. Because I seen him cruising around with the skid steer.
Was it cut out?
Wasn't completely cut out, it was.
It was just the lines were cut?
Yes, just outlined it.
Okay.
So it was cut, and it was just.
Okay. Sure. Sure.
Because I seen him cruising down, I think it was by Henderson Road, where they have the sweeper, enclosed sweeper on it. Well, then, just buck of the drive, went past it, and I'm like, come on, buddy. Other side of town, but.
Yeah. Yeah, my day was a while today, I didn't get a chance to. I looked at the ones that I just happened to go past, but.
Did we have any blowouts today?
Blowouts?
Basement buckles?
Oh, no. I heard about that. No, we're good on that front.
Okay, anything else for Kirby? Thank you very much, Kirby.
Okay. I may have missed the, did I miss the part-time help? Okay.
Yep, so that's taken care of.
I missed that?
It was on the consent agenda, it's done.
Okay.
We're good.
Yep.
Did we hire him?
Yep.
Oh, thank you. Sorry I missed that. Kids. Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Okay, item C, April ambulance report, Jamie.
Good evening.
Good evening. Oh, now it is. Okay. Just a quick update with the EMS week through the 16th through the 22nd. We did the coloring contest, handed out educational materials to different various organizations and schools. And then I was also, had the opportunity to create a meal for my crew, so I fed them one night as kind of an appreciation and a thank you for their job. Well done. Kix Bakery was very happy that we included them in on this. It was kind of a fun reward for the kids who turned in the coloring contest items to get a free EMS cookie, and it was pretty well received, so they were excited that we included them in on it. Let's see here. One of the donations that we got, the grant, was presented tonight in regards to the Stop the Bleed. That's going to be used to obtain the training materials needed for that particular item, so we'll go ahead and get that purchased this week. And then also, too, just a quick update. In regards to the students that we had in the last few months, there were two of our current students who were planning on taking the written test, and the EMS RB allows them to take the written test three times before they have to go through a refresher. One of the students has attempted it twice, and one student has attempted it once. But because they did pass their practical, they were still able to get certified through the state as an emergency medical responder. So we have been utilizing their help and training them on the ambulance, too, to help us out. And then also, one of our current students who will be finishing up the Allied Med program here in a couple months, she has also passed her practical, and we have her on our roster, too, as EMR as well. So it's nice that we were able to snag three really awesome EMRs for our service. I will be enrolling the newest student that we had accepted here a couple months ago. He has chosen to kind of go the Allied Medical program just because of its flexibility and such. He did entertain the one that they have at Crown College, and because he works full-time, he just decided to opt to go mainly predominantly online for that. So we'll get him enrolled in that, too. He was able to come down and do some ride-alongs with us, and he seemed to really enjoy it. I think he's got a passion for this, and we'd like to see that flourish. Last month, I attended a hospital in-service with Redusively Medical Center. Eric Weller was able to come in and do a program in regards to emergency preparedness. And yeah, that was kind of really exciting to see how the hospitals have their plans set in place, and how that kind of works in conjunction with our EMS service and fire. So it was a really nice training session by far. And then, last but not least, just wanted to kind of give you guys an update. We've been crazy busy, and I don't know what it is, but we've just been really busy. To date, calls for service are 221, and that includes standbys, cancellations, 911s, transfers, all that stuff. So we've, yeah, we've been staying pretty busy, so. Other than that, just wanted to give you an update. Any questions? Other than that, that's all I've got.
Okay.
Great.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
Okay, item D, Cemetery Committee Report. Councilperson Bus, Chairman of the Cemetery Committee.
Yeah, I don't know how we weren't shooting that, but. No, we met out at the cemetery.
Don't you want to move around and sit at that microphone?
No, just. We, we met out there, and real talkative bunch, but there was no complaints. We had talked a little bit about the maintenance and the funding of it, and how funds are appropriated, and blah, blah, blah. One of the ideas that Amy had brought up is forming a charter or a committee to see where we could set up for donations and funding. I think, what was it, like, seven grand or something like that in that area of what it costs to maintain it and keep it? We had went over what it costs per lot, and since then, I had double-checked with Glencoe, Hutchinson, a few of the public municipal ones, and from what I'm finding is everyone else is in that $800 to $1,200 per lot area. So I don't think it'd be anything to alarm, but moving forward, I think to set up something as a charter to take in funds besides just taxation would be wonderful to me. Room for growth, it looks like there's plenty of room yet to me out there. I don't see a big spur of. I think we have enough room for renters. But other than that, it looked really good, the columbarium and all that kind of stuff like Kirby had talked about. And of course, with the trends and that kind of stuff that we're seeing for burials, you know, there's been less and less all over, being whole body put in the ground versus ashes and stuff like that, so.
Another question was that one evening, how many different niches or inurnments could the columbarium handle? And it's, actually, it's 160. There's 80 niches, 40 on each side, but each niche has two, room for two containers. So there's room for 160 burials there.
That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Move on to May, MMPA Board Meeting Public Summary.
The monthly summary is attached to the agenda. I was not able to attend that meeting. Actually, I can go to sleep and forgot about it, I was full recovery.
Okay, got that in our packet. Item F, March, April, and May Building Reports. Any comments on that?
Just that they're up.
They're up. It's been, I think, many a year that I've seen.
That we've seen that many.
Two-page building report for a month. Yeah, things are really happening, so.
With the, I know the water softener waiver had just gone into effect not too long ago. I was looking through just to try to see if we were getting any. I didn't see any on there.
Not yet, huh?
So I don't.
Well, it's one step, I guess, but. We've, I think, you know, I think there's always been something, or recently has been something in the newsletter about making the change.
Yeah, I've seen quite a bit about kind of getting the word out. I, we never did hear on the, between the Green Isle and Arlington thing, was there talk about a, about like some sort of rebate or something? Because I mean, ultimately, we have to reduce the, what is it, chlorides?
Yeah.
And if we don't reduce it, then we've, you know, we've got to do something else, so.
The first were very good, the last report that Lee came and talked to me about, they were lower, they were very good. So we'll keep seeing, Green Isle just got the information that I've been sharing.
Okay.
Sell that flyer, if you sell that flyer, about reducing chlorine levels.
Mm-hmm.
And same thing with waiving building permit fees. So they just started, I know I gave it to Diane just before I went up on surgery, so. Both have got to do it, because both affect the waste management plan.
Yeah, I just didn't want it to, because it seemed like we had known about it a few years ago, and maybe hadn't made any headway trying to figure out what we can do to coach people into upgrading. Because, yeah, I mean, it's to get a better system, it's, you know, probably $1,200 to $1,500, and that's probably if you install it yourself, so.
Okay. Keep beating the bushes on that one. All right, item nine, First Reading of Ordinance 334. Amy, you want to introduce that?
This has to do with the Tony Hawk property. The city's only commission passed a resolution amending the land that the Tony Hawk purchased, the little property to industrial. It was a residential aid, but for the city council to change that, we have to amend the ordinance, because it turned our comp plan out of its zone. So we have the first reading, amending the ordinance this evening, and council is okay with it, and we have the second reading next month, passing a resolution at this level and amending that zone. So I think the ordinance itself is pretty short.
Yep, I can read that. City of Arlington, Ordinance Number 334, An Ordinance Amending the 2014 Arlington Comprehensive Plan For Future Land Use Map Pertaining to the Property at Northwest Quadrant Off County Road 9, Which Is Referred To As A Nickel Property. Item 1, The City Council of the City of Arlington, To Promote the Public Safety, Health, and Welfare Hereby Ordains, Arlington Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Shall Be Amended To Guide Parcel Number 31.0874.000 As Attached Here Too, To Industrial Use From The Residential Agricultural District Use. So that's the crux of the change that is being proposed with this ordinance change. Item 2, Effective Date, This Ordinance Is Effective Upon The Adoption Publications As Prescribed By Law. So is there any question about the change in zoning? Hearing none, this will be considered the first reading, and the second reading will be coming at the next council meeting. Item 10, Resolution 31-2021, A Resolution Accepting a Donation.
Resolution is for a donation of $100 for our Cemetery Committee Fund. We did put something out in the newsletter, and we've received a couple donations, and this is one of them.
I'll introduce Resolution 31-2021, A Resolution Accepting a Donation to the Cemetery.
Resolution 31-2021, Introduced by Councilmember Morgan, Second by Councilmember Batchor. And it is a resolution accepting a donation and designating its use. It is from Alberta Sander, $100 for the city cemetery fund. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call, Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor?
Yes.
Second member Bus?
Yes.
Four in favor, none opposed, one absent. Resolution is adopted. Resolution 32-2021, A Resolution Approving or Denying A Variance To Require Dimensional Size In Our Two, One and Two Family Residential District.
So would you like to say something about this one was approved by the Building Commission at last week's meeting?
Um, yeah, the only, the site plan that they presented met all the setback requirements and everything like that. The only thing that they did not meet was the dimensional requirement, which was 1,000 square foot, so as you can clearly tell, they were over that. But beyond that, I have not heard any residential complaints, and based off their description, that they want to. But beyond that, I have not heard any residential complaints and based off their description that they wanted about it. It just, it was straightforward, just storage for the cars and other off-road, like ATVs and other off-road vehicles, things like that.
What would the size of the, what is the size of the garage?
The size of the garage is one thousand four hundred and forty square.
Dimension, height, or lengths and widths?
Don't know off, I apologize, I don't know off the top of my head. I would have to look at the site plan.
Only a ten by fourteen? I think so, right?
Oh, no, fourteen hundred and forty? Yeah, you're right. Oh, so it's fairly small, yeah.
It, yeah, it.
Oh, but it, yeah.
No, but.
It was only allowed currently at thousand square feet.
Okay, okay.
Get a smart card in there.
Okay.
Yeah, as the code currently states, you only can have up to a thousand square foot for a detached garage. And as you see in this, they do not meet that, so they will require variance.
Okay.
As I said, based on the site plan, I do apologize, I should have provided a copy of this. They need, they, they need all the setbacks, ten foot like them.
Okay.
One interior setback is twelve foot, the rear setback is twenty-five.
Yeah.
They clearly need them. And where it's set up is actually in the back, so it's not going to be like a massive eyesore and anything like that. Also, um, it was brought to me, the facade actually is going to be magic. It's not going to be something like polka dots or anything wild like that. So they do need that, there's no metal roofing or anything like that that they're doing like that.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that was the only real major thing.
Did anyone attend the public hearing?
No, no one attended the public hearing. It was just the homeowners, um, and it was broke down, but these, the letter that they sent me, they pretty much said during the public hearing, I, I guess, anyways, I have no issue with it.
Okay.
There's nothing that I would deem as a red flag.
I'll introduce Resolution thirty-two dash twenty twenty-one, Approving the Zoning Dimensions for the Garage. Variance.
Resolution thirty-two dash twenty twenty-one, Introduced by Councilmember Morgan, Second by Councilmember Batchor. Is a resolution approving a variance to required dimensional size of the R two, one, and two family residential district for a garage at two oh six Fourth Avenue Northeast. Further questions, further discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call, Councilmember Bus?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Four votes in favor, none opposed, one absent. The resolution is adopted. Just as a side, it seemed, if I'm familiar with that lot, it's a pretty good-sized lot. It goes back a long ways, yeah.
That was the one thing that I took in consideration, given the size of the lot. And it's pretty far back.
Right.
There are enough trees and stuff to cover it.
Right.
Like I said, it, it really does meet everything about the size.
Okay.
And I did drive past it one time, just picking like an eyeball, looking at it.
Yeah.
Google Maps doesn't really have anything good on it. Like I said, I have no complaints.
Yeah.
It doesn't raise or any public nuisance thing or anything like that.
Okay. Let's see, item twelve, Resolution thirty-three dash twenty twenty-one, A Resolution Amending a Conditional Use Permit for Veterinary Clinic at four oh two West Alden Street, the B two Central Business District.
This is amending a conditional use permit that was granted to the veterinary clinic when they moved from Main Street into the old Arlington Enterprise Building. During the public hearing, the people that own the house right next door had requested that hedges be planned to separate into to keep the animals and stuff on the lot at the veterinary clinic. Well, we noticed that a fence had gone up instead of hedges and the conditional use permit specifically said hedges because that's what the homeowners wanted at the public hearing. I asked Bill to reach out to the people that wanted the hedges and that's why it was in the conditional use permit. And they provided a letter, which was in the packet, I believe, yes.
Yes.
The letter in the packet from the webber, where they said they were okay with a fence. So we are.
It's a solid fence.
It's a solid fence, yeah.
At the public hearing, they did not want a fence, they wanted the hedges.
Right.
They wanted the softer look, so.
They can put vines up on their side.
But.
Yeah.
So changing it to a fence, so.
Okay, so it's just that change, everyone's in agreement on it, the two parties are in agreement on it.
Because like it's a solid panel fence versus.
Yeah.
Like it's not a chain fence.
No, no.
It looks nice.
Yeah, it's, it's white and it's attractive fence, so.
Solid white fence, so.
Well, there's a resolution thirty-three twenty twenty-one, Amending a Conditional Use Permit for Veterinary Clinic at four oh two West Alden Street in the B two Central Business District.
Is there a second?
Second.
Whoop. All right, Resolution thirty-three dash twenty twenty-one, Introduced by Councilmember Batchor, Second by Councilmember Morgan. And it is a resolution amending a conditional use permit for veterinary clinic at four oh two West Alden Street in the B two Central Business District, in effect, changing the requirement from a vegetative fence to a solid white fence. All parties in agreement on the change. More discussion? Questions? If not, vote by roll call, Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Bus?
Yes.
Four votes in favor, none opposed, one absent, the resolution is passed. Resolution thirty-four dash twenty twenty-one, A Resolution Accepting a Donation, now that one has been taken care of?
No.
No, that one hasn't happened, taken care of. This is something different, yes, it is.
It's the one I forgot to put in the packet, but this is an actual donation.
Okay, I see it now.
So Lester, in memory of Curtis John.
Right.
Two hundred dollars towards the Arlington Ambulance Fund.
Right, right.
I'll introduce Resolution thirty-four dash twenty twenty-one, A Resolution Accepting a Two Hundred Dollar Donation in memory of John Sylvester.
Is there a second?
A second.
Mary's name before was Geeson, so if you know any of the Geesons, she's part of that family. All right, Resolution thirty-four dash twenty twenty-one, Introduced by Councilmember Morgan, Second by Councilmember Thomas. And that is a resolution accepting a donation, designating its use, donation amount of two hundred dollars in memory of John Sylvester, recently passed away, and is by, from his widow, Mary Sylvester, and to be used by the Arlington Ambulance Fund, number two oh two. Discussion? Vote by roll call, Councilmember Batchor?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bus?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Four votes in favor, none opposed, one absent, the resolution is adopted. Moving on to unfinished business, there is none. Moving on to new business, Presentation by Southern Minnesota Initiative Fund, Monica Sinstilene? Is that right? Okay, close.
All right.
Welcome.
I'll start then.
No, no.
Very glad to meet you all. Like I said, this is my second time, so bear with me.
That was just a reversal.
Yeah, it was a practice, practice approach.
So first I would just like to say thank you, Steve Arlington has been a great supporter of Smith and me. So really, really appreciate that. So starting off with a major thanks. And I suppose I'll just go ahead and dive right into it. I'm just going to give you a little bit of an overview of Smith, what we do, and a couple of local examples. People will ask me questions at the end, and if I don't have the answer, I will get back to you. I am newer, so there's a chance I won't have the answer. But I do know a little bit, so a little bit about Smith. We are Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation, is a nonprofit, it serves twenty counties in southeast and central Minnesota. Our focus is really on keeping all these communities strong and vibrant, healthy and active. And we do that through three main focus areas, in the order of which I'm going to talk about. They are economic development, early childhood support, and community vitality. Typically, we invest five million dollars annually into the region. But this past year, twenty twenty, was a little bit different, as I'm sure you all felt with the COVID pandemic. So we were able to facilitate a lot, a lot of COVID relief to our region. We actually distributed twelve million dollars in COVID relief throughout our twenty counties. And a good chunk of it out was right here in Sibley County. So the first area I want to talk about is economic development. That's actually our largest area of work. And our mission there, very similar to our core mission, is to keep Minnesota strong and vibrant through supporting small business owners and entrepreneurs. We do this in a variety of ways. One way that we do this is we are a gap lender, which allows us to take on a little bit more risk and be there for entrepreneurs who maybe weren't able to get everything that they need. Even for a small part of a lending package, we can also provide online technical assistance tailored to the entrepreneur. Which I think was really neat and wonderful. We also do free online monthly trainings for entrepreneurs. This is a trend that started during COVID, what can we do? We started doing online trainings, they may go back to in person, so stay tuned. But some examples of those online trainings would be like enhancing online presence, crafting a, 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 a recipe, a takeout menu. Crafting a takeout menu or seeing if an intern is right for your business is the upcoming training we have. We also are a grant maker and we have an economic development grant round coming up this fall. This is open to any cities, counties, EDA's, nonprofits. Those are ten thousand dollar grants to invest in your community. Circling back to COVID, that twelve million dollars we distributed, we were able to distribute two hundred thousand dollars in COVID relief grants to businesses right here in Sibley County to keep their doors open, which was a blessing. So that's a little bit about economic development, but we're going to chat about early childhood. So our main goal here is to make sure every child is ready to learn when entering kindergarten. We know that gives them the best chance to be strong and healthy and involved citizens as they get older in these communities. We want them to stay and stay educated. And we do that by supporting providers. So we want to make sure our children have quality care options. We want to empower providers who are currently operating, who stay operating, and help those who might want to enter the field have what they need. As you may know, there is a statewide shortage of childcare providers. So our goal, like I said, is really to make it easy for those in the field to stay and help new people start their childcare businesses. We do this in a variety of ways, but our one great way is we provide free online trainings, which allow early childcare providers to obtain necessary education credits to keep their doors open, keep serving children. And we also have a wonderful consultant, Jeff Anderson, who provides technical assistance to any childcare providers or city officials who need help with their childcare business. We also do grant making in early childhood as well. We provide annually about two twenty thousand bucks in partnership with Abdo and Capstone. And in Sibley County, we provided right around six thousand dollars worth of books this past year, which is right around four twenty-five bucks, so quite a few bucks for the kids in your county. And then with COVID, we also had four hundred fifty dollar relief grants specifically to early childcare providers and we distributed eleven thousand two hundred fifty dollars worth. So that's early childhood. Moving on to the final section is community vitality. And here, our goal is to keep bill profit dollars local. We want to keep people in the communities, involved in their communities, able to give back. And so we do this by acting as a fiscal host for community initiatives such as a community foundation. Yeah, so upcoming, we have small grant program opening back up. This is on June third, so that was earlier this week. Applications are open and you'll find them in your packet that I passed out, they're on the very back. We have a wonderful generous matching donor. So we have more to give than we ever have before, so I really encourage you to apply. If there's anything that comes to mind, this is really an opportunity for communities to get involved in projects that promote civic engagement, this is visioning processes, getting people out in the town. Yes, and those are ten thousand dollar grants. So that's a little bit about all our three areas. I want to say thank you again, cities and counties are biggest section of the borders and it really means a lot to the people we serve, so really appreciate that. Any questions? For those who don't know, on city council, the incubator space on Main Street was actually funded by Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation. That was a grant, a twenty thousand dollar economic development grant we received.
The, the ten thousand dollar one you were referring to, do you have any examples of what?
Yeah, um, I'm going to forget the name of the, Stewartville, for example, opened up a, like, an incubator, like a co-working space in their downtown, like they paired it with an event to, anything that allows you to sort of create a new way for community members to engage with your community. I actually think, look, I think we've done a couple in Sibley County, let me just see here. Yeah, so with COVID, like last year, we gave a ten thousand dollar grant, which was a small town grant, just like this is. It was tailored a little bit more towards COVID. So we gave ten thousand dollars to Sibley County Library to secure hotspots, pro books, and other vital technology required during the COVID nineteen pandemic. In twenty twenty, also in Winthrop, several of friends thrift store. We, ten thousand dollars went to them to help with COVID nineteen, get affordable family items for underserved members of communities. And then back in twenty seventeen, it was like we gave a grant to the Henderson Creative Economy Community. And that helps develop language and framework for community economic development through creative economy lens. And it looks like we developed a community driven creative placemaking projects in Henderson to connect people through environment, art, food, and other. So a lot that you can do with that ten thousand dollars. And if you have any questions, you can definitely reach out to me. I think the guidelines are available on our website if they're not on the application. But we really encourage you to apply because, like I said, we have a really generous matching donor this year. And what better way to do something for the community than after a year we all had in twenty twenty, so.
So the, the free online training, is that something?
Anybody can access.
Like, are they signing up via an email to get the messages?
Yeah, so both our early childhood training and our business trainings are, are online through email. If you would like to be tapped in, I can specifically make sure that you get all the emails for business trainings and early childhood trainings at our city administrator, if you're not already looped in. But yeah, those are sent via email about a month in advance, they send out quite a few reminders. And they're open to, to anybody.
I was thinking like the chamber members.
And they're on the website, too.
They're on social media, I'll share them on social media so people can find them.
Great, okay, any other questions for Monica? All right, thank you. Appreciate the presentation.
Absolutely. I appreciate you all. Thank you for your time.
All right, item sixteen, Twenty twenty Financial Statement.
Audit presentation. Hi. Good evening, Mayor in Frontville, thank you so much for having me tonight. Um, what we'll go through, well, I can start off. My name is Karen, and said I am a manager at Abdo and Myers and have been in charge of the city of Arlington audits for probably about the past ten years now. If you guys have any questions at any time, please feel free to interrupt me. What we'll go through is the PowerPoint presentation that you guys have in front of you. It's really an overview of things. If you guys have questions and want to get into the details, we have the audit report.
Did you have one?
That supports all of these numbers, make you look at that. So we will start on slide three. We'll go over just the audit results and audio opinions. So kind of talking about our responsibility and that. So as auditors, our responsibility are to make sure the material, the financial statements are free of any material misstatements. Materiality is calculated based on assets, liabilities, all of that. So we don't, we don't test every single transaction. We test the sample, we test based on the transaction size and whatnot. So not every transaction, but the sample to ensure that with any decisions you're making are based on good, actual bumpers. So, so we provide the opinion, so we express unmodified or clean opinion on your financial statements. That's something, that's a good thing that you're looking for. The other piece that we do is we also test internal controls and kind of walk through what the processes are and all of that. We'll get into that piece next. But another thing is Minnesota legal compliance that we test for. So there's certain requirements that cities require to follow based on state statutes, like timing of bills that are paid, making sure your deposits are federally insured, looking at compacts of interest, kind of a variety of tests that we do specifically for. for legal compliance piece. Then looking at slide four, we're looking at the audit results. So, like I said, we do test, looking at kind of your internal controls. The first finding does relate to those, say, creation of duties. So, this just means that you don't have the ideal controls in place. It does not mean that there are not controls in place. There are a lot of controls in place, but they're just not ideal due to the small staff. So, very, very common finding that happens. It does make sense to obviously hire more people, always to eliminate that finding. So, keep that in mind. It does not mean that there are not controls in place. But I always say that makes your job on council even more important, whether the extra set of eyes looking over things, reviewing things, approving them. So, just always keep that in mind. The second finding that we have is a legal compliance finding. So, this is some outstanding checks. So, for any payroll checks that aren't cashed within a year, they need to be turned over to the state as unclaimed property. And then any vendor checks, you have three years. So, if there are checks that are any longer than that, then that's where the compliance. So, we verbally said to get those cleared up and whatnot. Either reissuing the checks or turning them over to the state. So, it's a common thing. It gets overlooked a lot. It's, it happens. It's usually very small checks. It'll be like a dollar check or something that someone just loses or never cashes. And it just becomes a loss. So, that's true of that. But I imagine going forward, that will be cleaned up and won't be an issue, so.
So, if that check's not cashed and it's turned over, where's it going? What happens to that?
Yeah, so, it's, so you pay it to the state for unclaimed property, and that goes, then, I don't know exactly the process on the state, but when, like, you see commercials of, like, search for the money or what, they're searching for these, like, unclaimed property or value checks that it just gets turned to the state.
Well, they house the money and hang onto it.
Well, the city would pay the state, so...
Yeah, so the state houses it and hangs onto it and...
I don't know what their process is on how they monitor unclaimed property, but they kind of manage all of that. I could definitely get you more information. There's information out there. But yeah, it gets turned over to the state. I don't know.
When it's turned over to the state, you have to reveal to the state what you know about the payee. You know, like, they used to live here and were in business, and this was their address. They're gone, you know, mail not forwarded, whatever. So, you're supposed to give the state the background as you know it. And I'm not sure if the state then has any outreach effort at all. I think they just book it. And I think we can check it online.
You can check it online.
And as I recall, they sit on it for 21 years. If it's remaining unclaimed at that time, it merges into the State General Fund, and it's gone forever.
Yep.
So, after your check, you can get them from the city. All right, now looking at slide five, general fund fund balance. So, you'll see that red line is your general fund budget. The blue line is your unassigned or available fund balance. And then the gray line is your fund balance policy, which is 40% of next year's budget. So, you can see you are above that 40% and 64.4% of next year. So, a good balance there. You know, you're kind of, you know, if you look at the trend over the past five years, you know, you're within, you know, 62 to 72% is kind of what you have been at traditionally. So, all right in line there. Looking at slide six, so this is looking at your general fund budget to actual and any variances here. So, you'll see your revenues did come over budget by about $230,000. Most of that, or majority of that, related to cares. So, that funding there that obviously was not budgeted for wouldn't be doing that. So, that also goes along with the expenses as well. So, you see the revenue, but then also had the expenses. So, all that money has been spent and done and overweight and down moving on to the ARBA funding that will be coming out, so. There. The other thing I wanted to point out was there were just about $525,000 transferred out of the general fund. So, this went to a variety of funds. So, I'll just kind of go through. $157,000 went to the capital equipment fund to help continue funding that. $115,000 went to close out two of the capital project funds. It was 17 and 19 capital project funds. $188,000 went into the 2009 debt service fund to close that out, and $31,000 to the ambulance. So, that's kind of the variety of transfers that got made this year, which helped kind of clean up the financial statements, close some of those funds that had some deficit fund balance in there to eliminate them, so. A little bit more transferred out than what normally you guys have. And won't have those. Those won't be like an every-year type of transfer to close out those funds, so. Overall, change in general fund is $43,000 decrease, but like we talked about in the slide before, still well within that range of where you guys normally sit, so. Looking at slide seven, so this takes a look at your, kind of your main source of revenue, your general fund, and what's the trend been over the past three years. So, obviously, the biggest thing here is that intergovernmental revenue in 2020 increased due to cares. So, like I said, you'll see the same thing with the ARBA funds that will be coming out and whatnot. But otherwise, normally, that's pretty flat and steady is your LGA is very minimal increases and whatnot. So, I always say most of the increases are going to come from taxes because your LGA, your main source of grant revenue is going to be fairly consistent year after year, so. Looking at slide eight, so you can see here what your expenses have trended. Kind of general government has kind of consistently gone up along with public safety and that. Like I said, you know, some of that relates to cares expenses that were covered by the revenue and whatnot, so kind of more one-time things. And then obviously, the transfer out is a lot larger than here compared to other years. That won't be something that stays consistent year after year. Then looking on slide nine, taking a look at your capital fund, your different capital funds that you have, so your capital equipment, kind of revolving fund. So, you did have a decrease of $107,000. A lot of that related to the street lighting project for about $120,000. And then the other kind of major change was just that $188,000 that fund was closed. So, like I talked about with the general fund, the 2019 and 2017 fund was closed, so. Then on slide 10, looking at your special revenue funds. So, you know, obviously, your capital project funds are usually set up either as a capital revolving fund or as more specific project that you have going on. Your special revenue funds means kind of what they say. There's a specific source of revenue either that's restricted or has some purpose on why that that needs to be broken out of the general fund. So, you can see here, you know, ambulance, fire, community hall, et cetera. So, looking at your, all of your special revenue fund balances, you can see, you know, just a couple of the major changes. The ambulance fund did have an increase of about $111,000 this year. So, that was pretty consistent last year. I think it had a, it was about $90,000 that increased. So, kind of just keeping in mind, I guess, looking at future capital needs and whatnot. Obviously, things for ambulance and that, especially looking at new ambulance, and that is very expensive. So, kind of looking at what are your future capital needs and all of that for that fund. But you do have a pretty healthy reserve, those up in that fund. And the charges seem to be supporting the expenses in that fund, so. The other thing I wanted to point out was your EDA loan programs fund that did decrease that fund balance by about $46,000 there. A lot of that related to grants for businesses that were issued.
Capital equipment was $40,000.
Okay. So, otherwise, everything else, all the other funds stayed relatively consistent year after year. Then on slide 11, this is your debt service funds. So, this is debt that is mostly paid back by taxes and special assessment revenue. So, this is really important when you're looking at your future planning for capital projects, looking at what are your payments over the next 10 years? When one bond falls off, can you plan for another bond to hop on at that time to do a capital improvement at that time? So, your debt levy stays pretty consistent, and you don't have any major swings in debt levies. So, you can see here, you have one bond that drops off in 2027, which is a huge decrease. So, like I said, really helpful when looking at your future capital plans to say, okay, this is a good year to add on more debt if we're going to do that, if there's a need for it, whatnot, so. Good thing to pay attention to. On slide 12 now, so just, we're going to take a switch and look at your enterprise funds. So, your enterprise funds operate differently from your governmental funds. Your governmental funds are really supported by grants, taxes, special assessments, anything like that. Your enterprise funds really should operate like their own business. So, their revenue should be enough to cover all their expenses and their capital needs. And that's where you look at, okay, if they're not enough, okay, we need to reevaluate the charges that we're charging our residents and whatnot. But, so kind of keep that in mind when you're looking at these slides, is they really should be operating on their own. So, for the water fund, you can see the top graph shows, the blue bar is your operating receipts, the gray bar is your operating disbursements, and the green is your debt payments. So, you can see over the past four years, you know, the water fund has pretty consistently covered its operating expenses and its debt payments. So, that is a good thing there. The chart below, the graph below, shows your actual cash balance. So, you can see the green bar is your actual cash balance. The blue bar is your minimum target balance. And this is something that we use just kind of as a benchmark. So, it's not anything official or something you have to be at, but just kind of a general idea of where you wouldn't want your cash to go anywhere below that. So, you can see basically the difference between in 2020, the difference between the two is kind of what you have for capital needs. And obviously, you guys know that capital needs in any of these enterprise funds are very expensive, so these reserves can be spent down very fast. So, just kind of keeping that in mind and really looking at what are your future capital needs, how are you paying for it and whatnot, is extremely important in these funds. So, keep that in mind. Did have a little bit of a decrease in cash, which you can see, you know, at first seems odd, but well, our operating receipts cover your operating disbursements. A lot of that is capital driven. The, in 2020, there was a transfer of $77,000 from the water fund to the sewer fund. So, you will see that that played into probably a majority of this cash decrease, even though it looks like the revenue has covered all the expenses there.
That was with the lift station.
So, keep that in mind, so you'll see then how that affected the sewer fund too. So, that was the main driver of that minor cash, you have about $10,000 decreasing cash, but still have about that $700,000 available that could be spent on for capital expenses. Then the sewer fund, so you can see here, kind of looking at the top, pretty consistent year after year, you're covering your debt payments and operating expenses. And then looking at the cash balance, you know, '17, '18, you're kind of right at that balance, the minimum target balance, and then have had a, you know, from '19 to '20, had a pretty good cash increase. Like I said, that does relate to part of that $77,000 that was transferred from water to sewer. So, that's the majority of that increase for the year. Then looking at the electric fund, so here you can kind of see that top graph kind of swinging both ways, '17 and '18, operating receipts were below the expenses in that, '19 right at it, and '20, it did increase with the disbursements there, so that's...
Well, we will want to continue to monitor this by now.
Yeah, so it's, like you said, it's good to monitor these, so you don't have to have the huge increases and whatnot, so you can just have minor increases year after year and whatnot is important to monitor. But yeah, you did have a good cash increase this year from '19 to '20. Like I said, these enterprise funds, it's tough because the capital needs are a lot, and they're very expensive. So, it always seems like a lot of money until you start getting some of those bills in, and you're like, oh, that completes things really fast. So, I always just say, just look at your capital needs, the ones you can plan for. Obviously, there's always unexpected ones that come up, repairs and maintenance and that, but however much you can plan will overall be better for that fund to gradually increase those rates to support the capital needs. And then looking at stormwater on slide 15. So, you can see here, there was an increase in rates in 2020, which is the, you know, this, keep in mind, this graph is a little bit, you know, our previous graph was $2 million. This is $140,000. So, it looks like a much bigger increase than what it is, but it still was an increase this year. The cash increased by about $10,000 as well, so. And they did have, had an increase in cash of $10,000 and also had capital expenses of $36,000. So, keep that in mind too, that you still increase cash with that $36,000 in capital expenses in that fund, so. Then on slide 16, this looks at your total cash investment balances between all of your funds. You can kind of see how each fund type breaks out. Overall, your cash increased a little bit, but stayed pretty consistent with 2019. So, no major changes there. Probably the biggest thing was the capital funds that would be closed funds to do things wrong and whatnot that affected the capital funds, but overall, cash stayed pretty consistent. Now, on slide 17, so this is where we'll look at, we'll compare the City of Arlington to cities in Sibley County and also cities in the class of four. So, that's cities under $10,000. So, I would say there's no two cities that are ever the same, but it gives you a general idea of where the City of Arlington sits and compared, very similar in size, or in similar area. So, class four, as the state classifies them, class four is tough because under $10,000 is a lot of different cities, so keep that in mind as well. But it at least gives you an idea. So, looking at tax rates, you can see kind of you're right in the middle there between cities in Sibley County and then also class four cities right between there. And obviously, the major driver in the tax rate relates to market value of homes, so. In a lot of smaller cities, we do see tax rate being higher, but then taxes per capita being kind of right in line or lower. So, that's a pretty common thing that we do see there. And you can see with your taxes per capita, you are lower than both class four cities and cities in Sibley County, so. Then on slide 18, so your long-term debt per capita. This includes all your debt. So, this is your debt paid by tax, maybe special assessment, and it also includes your enterprise debt paid by your charges. So, you can see, you know, you're kind of right in line there with Sibley County and a little bit higher, but your taxes are not out of line, so you're able to support the debt reasonably, and your enterprise funds are appropriately capitalizing that too. So, not anything to be super alarmed of, just kind of for your reference. The next one is your debt service expenditures. This is strictly looking at your debt paid back by your taxes and your special assessments. And you can see below Sibley County, but above the class four cities. And then it drops down, Sibley County, you see, drops down in 2019. Sometimes refunding funds can kind of skew these numbers because they'll issue them, and then they'll pay them back in different years. So, sometimes refunding funds can really mess with some of these debt numbers. But when we have, when we look at the whole list, it's really hard to recount the details. So sometimes refunding funds can really mess with some of these debt numbers, but when we have, when we look at the whole list, it's really hard to recount all the details from the state, so. Then slide nineteen, so this looks at your current expenditures, so your operating expenditures per capita. And you can see, you know, kind of the gradual increases, but that's also a trend with class four and Sibley County too, kind of right in line there. Capital expenditures are tough because it all depends on where your capital projects are going on. So every city has different timings of when major things are going on, which just kind of gives you a general idea of what other cities are spending on capital. Then looking at expenditures by program per capita, so you can see kind of by type, government, public safety, with, say, all this info. No, nothing major, like we talked about, your transfer dollars were higher this year, but I expect those to go back down into more of the other two ranges next year of that. And then the bottom graph is looking at revenues. So you'll see your taxes are lower than the other two, which we saw on the previous slides. And the other thing is intergovernmental, that will go up, but this is 2019 for both those other ones. So what my care is information is put in for those other two classes, then it will hop up as well. Then looking at your debt service coverage, so this is saying for your enterprise funds, basically, how many times can, from your operating revenue, can the enterprise funds pay the debt? So the higher, the better here. So you can see here that your funds are doing just fine. And like I said, I think the, the refunding funds can skew these numbers, so I think that's probably what happened from seventeen to eighteen, is there was a refunding fund in there that kind of skewed that number a little. As your debt service have been pretty, or your sewer fund debt service have been pretty consistent. And same, your electric fund now, obviously with the rates grading and all of that is looking much better. Do you guys have any? Yeah, yeah, that did increase. It's a little bit different level when you're looking at the electric fund, like I said, compared to water and sewer, you're looking at millions compared to hundreds of thousands, so it does look a little bit different, but.
So does, so does one need to take a, you know, an extra year to find out where it kind of settles out after making such a big jumper?
Like when you like increase the rates for?
When we're talking budgeting this year, we'll be talking increases again on that order.
So it really kind of looks at what your capital, honestly, capital is the driver of all of those funds, really looking at what, because you can see that it's covering when you go to slide.
Yeah, so I, I was referring primarily on the electrical rate.
On the electric.
Because, I mean, that was something that, you know, I think it was kind of held off on for quite a while, and, and rates increased, you know, all around us a lot. And then we were sitting here with not enough money in there and whatnot, and then it was, it was a big shock and awe to the community at that time.
Yeah.
So it's trying to figure out, you know, when, what, how long does it take to reevaluate? Is this, you know, is this increase going to be enough to sustain us for a little while, or do we need to make a, you know, a smaller increase one way?
Yeah, so if you go to slide fourteen, I think that is a really good picture, gives you a really good idea of kind of what it looks like, so you can see, you know, twenty twenty, for a year that you brought in more operating revenues than your operating costs.
Yeah.
So that's a good sign, that your increase wasn't enough for the cost. And then you can see your, you know, your cash increased by about two hundred and fifty thousand. So you know, you can look to see, okay, maybe you feel like, okay, that's good, let's let it rest, see what next year's cash increase looks like. See what next, you know, what does next year's capital, do you have major capital needs coming up in the electric fund? They said that's really the biggest driver in all these enterprise funds is looking at what your capital needs are. And if you're going to pay for it with reserves, if you're going to issue debt, how you're paying for all those capitals, really the driver in those funds and with those rates. So or if you need to add staff, or you know, any major operational changes that will happen in those funds, really should be evaluated with those rates that you're charging.
As our usage, industrial usage goes up as far as electrical is concerned, that should help the revenue side of it too. Because we have some expansion Scott equipment, we have North, Northland drying and, and so.
Yeah.
They're all expanding and using more.
Yep, yeah, yeah, so it's great when you have the expansion, with expansion, there's additional costs as well too, so you know, kind of balancing all of that as well, so. Yeah, I think it, it looks good from nineteen to twenty, I think that it looks in a much better financial position, but I think if you evaluate and look, you know, there's a possibility to say, okay, let's see how it plays out next year and not change anything. And then go from there to see what, or if you feel like, uh, no, we need to get, we want the reserve at such and such a level for this project coming up. That might need to be, you know, since, like you said, it's kind of a shock when they have that huge increase, residents don't usually like that, so.
Start with whatever we had to cover, but I haven't heard of it.
Yeah, electric wise.
Surprise fifty thousand dollar one that Kirk Kort approved was.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
So that will impact.
That will impact that, but other than that, you know, lights are, the lights.
We do the routine calls, which we budget.
Yeah, and that's pretty well under control, I think, so I don't, I don't foresee any.
Sarah Peterson is going to get me a budget this summer.
Okay.
So we'll see if they have any.
Okay, mhm.
Well, some great, great data.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we, we want to tailor this to what you guys want to look at, what you guys want to monitor, what you want to see. So if there's ever anything you want us to change or something you want to look at closer, let us know, because we can always change things in the PowerPoint and that, so. Or if you ever have questions throughout the year, my contact information is on the last slide, feel free to reach out to me at any time, so.
Okay, okay, thank you, Erin, appreciate it, thank you. All right, item seventeen, consider requests from community center committee to open liquor licenses to businesses in Sibley County.
I'm going to turn this one over to Joel, because I was out at home.
So a little history back last year, I would say, I don't know exactly the, the time, but probably sometime around now, about a year ago, the community center committee had, had a lot of discussion, as they did this time around, about the, the finances and, and ways to bring, you know, more funds into, into this, into this building, basically. And there's a, a strong feeling that renters are being limited based on the fact that people who want to rent the building don't want to have the one supplier provide the alcohol service for their event, and literally, they will not rent the space. So at this time last year, they had, the committee had basically, I don't know if they made a motion or how they did it, they, they had, they had wanted us to approve opening up to Sibley County. So, and at that time, based off of my memory, I believed we had, they were proposing splitting up the, the licensing for the space. I don't remember if it was five hundred dollars, that's what kind of, that's what I, it is either two fifty or five hundred dollars.
Reducing, and I think to like two fifty is a horrible limit.
Well, that was part of it, but there was also, I don't, is it fif- fifteen hundred right now?
It's a thousand dollars.
Or a thousand, right, so the feeling was that, you know, two hundred and fifty dollars, they might get, you know, one, you're going to get your thousand if, if you get four, four bars to join. But it also, you know, at that rate, you get the thousand that we've already got that we're budgeting off of, but it opens up. So let's say I lived in, you know, Gaylord and, and my favorite, you know, watering hole was such and such, and they were one who might provide bartending here at this facility, and I was going to get hitched or have some sort of celebration, I would go to them and, and hire them, right? And maybe I have an axe against the person that we, that we have. So their recommendation and what they're asking for is, is for us to consider that, and I personally, I, I support the, this effort. Last year, I know it was voted down, and I think that was strongly because of COVID times, maybe there was, you know, more to that, but and this time last year, all the bars were shut down and you couldn't do nothing and, you know, about the time that we were talking about this, so.
Just adding that to, given that I would personally deal with people scheduling and stuff like that, people have come to be, be people actually wanting to see if there's a different way to use somewhere else. I take it they have nothing against Arlington dugout, they just have certain people that they would rather use as bartenders and stuff like that because they know them and they're more familiar with them. So I've had actually a few people that like to schedule a place that were asking questions about it. So I think particularly from what I've gathered from the public, it would be a good approach for us to maybe do that. It would incentivize, I feel, more people to hire, to be more, encourage people more to come here and use this facility, because they like the facility. I've had, no compliments, people enjoy it, they just feel that they're limited, like Joe said, when it comes to liquor and things like that.
So right now, there's only, we only allow one vendor for alcohol per year, right?
It's not that we only allow, we used to have two.
Yeah, it used to be Arlington, Alice and the Dugout.
And the Arlington house didn't do it.
They just backed off.
Right, but they couldn't do it in the, they weren't doing it in the same year, right, and take turns.
I believe they were in the same year.
They would each pay their thousand dollars and then.
And then whoever was renting the hall would decide if they buy it from here or there, give it to them, that's how it was working.
There was some discussion about that when the two, and there was, you know, one other, and one of them would catch word that they were going here and then all of a sudden start underbidding it, and it, and it created sort of some hostility apparently between the two.
There was, yeah.
It is, it is, it is, yeah.
Right, I think they were also saying for the money that they're spending on it, if you open it up to more people, they're not going to get the return on that.
But that's where, so that's exactly where the, the two fifty comes in, so, you know, they can recoup that in, in one event, and then everyone they get after that.
So we're proposing to lower the liquor licenses?
Oh, first and foremost would be opening it up to, to Sibley County, and then secondly is, you know, lowering the, the cost for, for this venue from a thousand to two fifty.
I got a question, so if we were to allow outside of Sibley, outside of Arlington, liquor licenses to come sell whatever here, how, off of last year, the year before, whenever we have any data inquiry, how many more rentals would we receive from, let's say, Green Isle, Gaylord, and Gwinthrop given?
Well, last year, I mean, everything was locked down, it's kind of a.
Pot shop, but go from the year before, how many people from Green Isle, Gaylord, Gwinthrop given?
The problem is, we don't have data to compare.
Nothing.
Well, they can never wind it up to Sibley County, there's real data.
Well, I'm talking for just spreading it out, how many people a year do we get from Green Isle, Gaylord, Gwinthrop that want to come to Arlington?
To rent the facility?
Yep, that, that would want to bring like Dennis Neisen and, or whatever it is and give it to me out now.
Well, I think in the second year.
There's people renting from.
Oh, over.
Yeah, I mean, anybody can rent it, it's just a matter of, you know, who does, but.
Yeah, so out of the.
Well, I can tell you right now, it's mainly more people in town, I have a few, I would have to really look at the folks more, but I think what you're referring to, I think it's more based on incentive. I think there's really no incentive for people to come out in because granted of the liquor license restriction, because I, I mean, just from me dealing with people, my experience dealing in customer service and stuff like that, I really, if I was someone that was from like Green Isle coming in, I really don't know Arlington dugout, I don't see the incentive to use it because I don't know them. And particularly, the word of mouth from what I've gathered, some people kind of disfronted of them being here, but that's, like I said, that's just word of mouth. I'm not, from what I've worked with, the events they've do, they have not caused me any problems or anything, but like from what I've gathered, they, they don't necessarily have the best reputation, but at the same time, it's not a bad reputation. So it's, it's a mixed bag there, and I just don't feel that, there's really no incentive, so the data, in my opinion, the data will just show people from in-town doing that.
So this is one where we've got a committee who's passionate about trying to bring some, some revenue into the facility. And it's, you know, this facility is not making enough money to cover the costs and the building's, you know, fully expen-, you know, fully paid for. So I mean, honestly, for me, it's, you've got, you've got a committee of, you know, community members that are saying, hey, look, this is what we want, and then we go and shut it down. Now, last year was a different story, I mean, you had businesses that, you know, were told they couldn't run, they couldn't sell, you know, basically, they couldn't do anything, and, I don't know.
To me, what I'm just trying to.
I mean, why not just try it?
Trend around my head around if it's two people that threw a fit that they couldn't get it, somebody not Arlington or with this.
It was more like ten or fifteen or whatever.
Well, I gather, the people I was talking to, I can answer last year's, it, there's one, sixty, I hope you have.
Talks of, yeah, so there's talks of, I get, I don't drink, so I go get a drink at six P M. and I go back at seven P M., it's a different price. I hit it at nine P M., it's tripled, and you get to ten or eleven, and all of a sudden, it's, you know.
I mean, at, here.
Yes, so grounded, I'm feeling a little bit looser, so cash is flowing by that time, but the price is continuing to go up. Now, this is, you know, this is feedback from people within the residents, I guess you could say. I haven't personally.
Part of that is the people that have bartending as well, I mean, they just don't know what the hell.
Yeah, the.
I mean, I've been here, and I've seen that where I've gone up, and it's like, well, okay, I guess I'll go over to this bar all the time, it's cheaper here than this one. Well, you have two things, I've seen, but now I sort of understand what you're talking about. But I think that has to.
Well, one of the individuals had experienced himself, and it was, you know, I'm, I'm just hearsaying.
Well, I, I seriously would support the, the committee's views on it and give it a try. One question I would have though is why are we drawing the line at the, at the county boundary? If somebody wants to come from Belle Plaine or Glencoe or, open it up. I don't think there's anything magical about just saying, well, you have to be in the county.
Yeah, as long as they have a Minnesota.
Well, yeah, they'd have to be properly licensed, yeah, exactly.
You know, because, I mean, that's going to open it, well, yeah, that's going to open it way up for people to get whatever they want.
Yeah.
Yeah, and isn't that we, what we want is to, for them to come in and make it, yeah, it's competition.
Disagreed, that I figured, you know, just start small, maybe work from there, but then whatever you guys.
We're going to make a change, I think we should, you gotta go open it up.
Did they have any feedback, Joe, on opening it up more to just Sibley County or?
I think that was just, hey, we're trying to get something that will stick, I don't want to speak for.
Does any be, so like with this, as the night goes on, going up to the drink bar, and they've noticed that we start out at four dollars for whatever, and then we go back after everyone's had a little bit more, and now it's six dollars for whatever. Has anybody ever approached the bar owner that this is happening?
My knowledge, I don't know, this, like I said, this was brought up to me, and I, to my knowledge, I have, I have not heard anything, like I said, this is just a presentation.
I guess, one more definitely have to pass.
I think it's more on, myself, I think that's happening on into it, because they got, I mean, they're just trying to get everybody, their brother.
Oh, to bartend, basically. Oh, they're bartending, basically.
Well, bartending, but some of them, they don't, I mean, they don't know. They're not used, they're not normal bartenders, so.
You're saying it's not all ending up in.
No, they don't, some of them just don't know what they're doing, that's what I'm trying to say.
That one's for me, that one's for you.
That we would wanna get incomers?
They really can do their own thing, I mean, it's their license, they can do that.
No, I, I was just, you know, that. Of any being, you know, if we open it up to everyone.
Well, I think it would be on the renters' responsibility or on, on their shoulders.
Yeah, whoever they're.
We're saying you can bring whoever you want in, it's your choice.
But they'd have, they'd have to.
So they have to take all the life.
Do they, do they have to provide the license? Well, I mean, right now, we've only got one, but clearly.
Yeah, they would have to do that and I think shows, right, they're bringing the people in. And that particularly makes us not look as bad, particularly which is using one person. This is the room, that's kind of making the community center look bad. However, if they bring in their own person and they do that, that's really not on us, that's, I'm sorry, that was official, I.
Yeah, I was just.
They should've, they should've researched a little bit better at that point. And, I mean, yeah, it's, that's the kind of thing that's going on, I, I, I have no experience in that, so I have no idea.
Yeah, I'm not.
I just think it's nice to give people choices like that.
If we're gonna open it up, I don't say we will admit it, but it's probably best.
For you, I, I would agree with.
So.
I have a question for your answer, should I bring this back as a resolution that specifies, oh, they have to.
And then what does that do to, um, we'll contract with them or anything like that, like, what does it end up like?
With the dugout?
Yes.
Well, the dugout has actually, you know, the liquor licenses run July one, if you're June thirty. The dugout has actually paid for the next year already, so if we change the dollar amount.
Dollar amount, we'd have to refund them, I suppose. Yep.
Does this need to be in resolution then, or?
Uh, I don't know if there's a correct technical answer to that, it's probably not a bad idea.
It just, I would feel more comfortable because it's.
You can get out all the wise and air force.
Everything's like in writing.
Yeah. And you can back it up with the reasoning behind it a little bit.
And we still have time, we can pass the resolution the next, the twenty-first.
Yep.
Uh, one historical comment, and I only have a vague recollection of this. But, uh, there's a certain amount of, uh, inventory, uh, movement and setup required. And I think that that's why Arlington House faded out. Uh, again, I may be not recalling this correctly, but that they didn't feel they had the personnel to migrate the equipment in for one night event and then pull it out again. And I think there was an issue at one point too where our current vendor, uh, was leaving too much inventory.
Yes.
Yeah, and it was all unlocked, so then we had to tell them, hey, look, that stuff's gotta get out of here. Because there was teenagers running around and you got booze and all kinds of stuff running around.
So if we open it up to, uh, let's say we end up with a half dozen licensed vendors, um, are they all gonna want to, uh?
Store them.
Yeah.
Yes, there's stuff here. Uh, uh, so, I'm just, I'm just mentioning that, that seemed to have been an issue at certain points in the past.
Right.
I mean, ultimately, if you do it for one year and it's a total failure and only one does it, then you just revert back.
Go back to the other, sure.
Hasn't been any interest from other, than other.
Not at a thousand dollars.
Right. My, my only thing on this is, I get where, what the, what the idea is of getting more, generating more revenue and giving people more choices. But we're also supposed to be supporting our local businesses as well. That's my take on it, you know.
Well, we can still do that, I mean, we can still say these are the, you know, either the one, two, or potentially three or four people that we have, or you can choose, you know, who you like to bring as long as they, you know, are licensed here.
I think, just to add a little more, why Denise quit doing it, cause I had talked, she had talked to me about this many months ago. That, the reason why she wanted to get out of it was cause also, because people were going back and forth to both places. You know, the dugout would maybe give them a better pricing on kegs if they used so many kegs. And Denise, you know, wanted, wanted to sort of just hold rates wherever they were at, so. She said it wasn't worth it if she had to start bringing down the rates of what she was selling kegs a beer for and things like that. So that was a driver why she sort of backed out of it.
Well, the other piece to that as well is staffing.
Well, staffing is a big part.
If you pay your thousand dollars and you have it for the whole year, you get the schedule, you know that you're gonna have all these events. And you can plan for it, right? So trying to like, oh crap, we got an event here, scrambling to get people, you know, I, I, that was a big driver in that piece as well. So, also.
I, I think for this one, again, it's, it's a committee. And I've, I've been able to go to two of these in two different years or whatever it was. It seemed like last year we didn't really have very many, but you've got folks that are passionate. Uh, I think this one in the cemetery, I'm sure you probably gathered it too, like, they were really, you know, into trying to figure out how to get some revenue up, right?
Yeah.
And it's, you know, this is their idea and they want, like, I'm thinking merchandise, you know, T-shirts and.
If we can peddle hats out to.
But I mean, you know, so here they are, they all wanna, they all believe in this and they wanna try it. Just do it and, and you know what? If it doesn't work, then next year they gotta sit down and talk about, oh, well, gosh, we tried that and, you know, what do we do now?
Yep, yeah. We have consensus on to bring it back for a resolution action at the next meeting?
I would be in favor of it.
Can discuss it further at that time? Do you have information you need for? Okay.
Two fifty, right? Is that the dollar amount on the side of that, two fifty?
I, I, I believe there was something approved and it should've been in the notes from the previous, uh.
Meeting?
Uh, meeting, I think we actually had it in that big room because of.
Last year was two fifty.
And, yeah.
What, what about all the setups? The pop setups and stuff like that, that's here, but we don't, we don't, we don't put all that stuff. Are they gonna have to take away all their canisters and hoppers and ours?
I do not actually know who the canisters, if that belongs to the dugout or.
My knowledge, you, you always claim that if you sit there.
Yeah, I know, it's canisters, I don't have work, I can't be.
Yeah, I was just.
Yeah, and they probably only do, leave it there because it, it is only their, you know, they're the only one.
Yeah.
But, it's gotta, there's a lifespan on that stuff.
Well, there's a lifespan, but then also it's gonna be, so, it's gonna take quite a bit for these other vendors to come in and set up.
Sure, they'll have to bring all their stuff every time, yeah, and take it away again for the next event.
It might not, it might only be one, it might only be.
Well, this is the thing, if it, if we, that would be more or less as the coordinate, that would be on me. So, we would have multiple vendors come in, we would be, I would need to think of a process and have it presented to the committee. We would have to take it from there. Because there are, there, like I said, you know, it really would depend on the situation, cause I feel there are ways to rent me in. But I really don't wanna speculate right now because I, it hasn't been on my table. I have to pretty much, these, particularly the vendors are consistent, like, if there's like, say, like five or seven vendors that are consistently being used, you know, then maybe we work, I could work out a system and that was something like that, but who knows?
Cross that bridge when we come to it, yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, Reza will be coming back then at the, to the next council meeting.
A comment regarding the canisters.
Yes.
Going back to my old days working at a fast food job, I suspect those canisters are owned by a vendor like Pepsi or Coca-Cola. And, uh, you know, a local bar will say, uh, you know, I think we're gonna have so many setups and so then the broil guy will drop a bunch of those canisters off. And I think they sometimes lose, lose track of them.
Oh, I think they do, yeah.
So, I don't know, maybe they've got some labels on them somewhere.
We've had a lot of canisters in that one room for a long time.
They have seals on, so when you pop the seals, I know.
Then it's yours, yeah.
They've got put in use. I think that's where that, that's where they get paid for, when they come back and check on them and take the empties, that's all they get charged for.
Well, that would be even better, if you put the German press, uh, cans or bottles, kind of setups like that.
CO2.
Yeah, I mean, it's cheaper doing it that way, however, it's better if you do it.
Well, I thought the last event that I was in there with, I could swear that they were using soda out of a can.
They, they, cause they, when they set up like a second bar, they do it that far and then the other one they're using out of a can.
And I'm pretty sure on the last one, it was just one in the corner. And I'm pretty sure I seen the owner and the bartenders out of a can, so.
Well, some of, some of the stuff, cause they don't have.
Yeah, 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 but your traditional Coke Pepsi, generally when I drink hard liquor, that's what I use for selling them.
Yeah.
Those are all coming out of a can.
I also wonder if they're using. Yeah. Some of the people, um, like hosting it, they have their own stuff, cans and Pepsi. So I, when I've seen, I've, I haven't seen others, you know, except for high, they might be using theirs or something along those lines. However, I, I, I can't be certain, I, I can watch a bunch of other things, so I can't really learn to have it properly. But you are correct, I have, they have been using cans more often than this one, however, they have used it, I have seen them use that as well.
Okay, let's move along, we can talk about the procedures later. Um, committee updates, are there any that we haven't seen minutes from or anything like that?
We had a community center update, our community center committee meeting last week, week, or last week.
Community ed, you mean?
Community ed.
Okay. Community center.
And in that meeting. No, uh, community ed, um, one of the programs that, that's offered, um, ways to drum up some more variety of, of activities for people. I've followed the website, you being able to pay and register online. So that's gonna be the thing that's coming soon. Um, and then probably by, uh, late summer, so. They're all excited about that and, uh, yeah.
Okay.
Not too much else.
Yeah, thank you, anything else?
Just two other things, other than what we're talking about, there was some discussion on the farmer's market. Um, you know, whether or not they should be paying some for different things that goes on as far as the use of that, um, of, of the facility itself. And then, uh, discussion on a five-year facility plan as far as, you know, different things to try to reduce costs. Uh, one of the big costs of the facility is the utilities. So Kirby had, uh, had a, had a company out and I think he looked at.
Three different, uh, three different buildings, um, looking at doing like lighting upgrades and what it would, what it would cost and how long the payback would be. So there's some discussion there, trying to figure out ways of reducing the cost to the facility. And then also obviously throwing up revenue.
Okay.
What, so is farmer's market, do they actually set up in here?
No, I'll.
They use kitchen and.
I think the feeling was that, uh, was it a chamber maybe? Take a little longer to cover these, cause there's, like, they, I think it was the cancer group is that, I don't remember if they were paying money. Like, they pay money in order to basically use the restroom and.
Store stuff in the kitchen.
In-store stuff in the kitchen.
Yeah.
Here we've got, you know, another group that's, you know, utilizing the kitchen and also using the restroom. So I don't know, I'm not sure what's in their budget or if there's, if there's anything that could kick a little bit in. I, I mean, I, I do think the farmer's market is great, it's definitely something that should be well supported amongst the community, you know. Who's that farmer's market, is that an association or a co-op that? Does really, whoever shows up, shows up, pays their fee for sitting.
Chamber of Commerce.
Oh.
Chambers.
I'd like the chamber to worry about it.
Well, well.
Oh, yeah, collect from them and pour compensation.
No, like the chamber has funding, you know, do collect some, I believe, I don't know that much about it.
Yeah, from the vendors, mhm.
It was also talking about, you know, something selling popcorn and they could show up and they, and that person could get kicked out, they got a place, so.
It ain't me, it was.
I'm afraid to talk on that, but I'm not, I'm not that familiar with the farmer's market. But the way I look at it, particularly, as Jess said, we are making other groups, particularly they use the kitchen in our facilities. Pay, I think they should, they should pay as well.
It's easy, just follow the policy, exactly, that way you're treating everyone, right?
Right, right.
I'm just sharing that in case there's like all the hoopla, that, you know, farmer's market is being asked to pay. Do we get a lot of vendors for the farmer's market?
I think there's, I mean, I'd say there's probably the max I've seen is maybe fifteen, that's a boat something like that.
There was like a.
Yeah, it's usually pretty good. Mondays starting end of the month, no, it's starting this month sometime. Maybe. Yeah. Okay, anything else?
Anybody contacted, um, fill me up about the mess, uh, weed issue or their gas station? But, uh, Bill put that, a lot of it right outside town.
You mean they're flowering to that?
Is that the one near the dollar general right front?
Yep.
Okay, thanks for letting me know, I will go, but it's.
Yeah, that's not flowers.
So they haven't been mowing or anything, is that what you're saying?
Well, it's on top of the old pool tank, that's.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Plus, the, plus, right in front of the building is also, is weed.
Yeah.
Well, I do, I, I do recitation, so I will grow out, respect that and exonerate that if you're not.
Okay, all right. Ross, would you wanna make any comments on Northland Dry? I know that's been sort of a topic lately and complaints lately and.
Well, uh.
Pollution control.
Yes, pollution control got involved after, uh, many contacts, uh, by city staff. And they've been working on a, they call it a settlement agreement or settlement order, uh, uh, that they've been working on with Northland Dry all winter. Uh, and, uh, I was surprised to learn that in that process, uh, they consider it to be absolutely confidential until the final settlement order is issued. And that includes confidential as to the city, uh, finding out what's going on. Uh, once the order is issued, it becomes public record and we, along with the general public, have a right to see the entire order. Um, they were supposed to have issued that final order some months ago. Uh, of course, coronavirus and, uh, working remotely, you know, gives everybody an easy excuse for delays. Uh, and that's what they told me. Uh, the most recent word was that, uh, they would have that final order by beginning of June. I contacted the person, uh, on June first and they said, uh, the order has been finalized and it's now gone to senior staff for final approval. And they, uh, claimed that it would be ready before mid-June. And of course, that mid-June is rapidly approaching. Um, I, I understood that originally that they were going to, uh, require Northland Dry to either take or continue corrective actions, uh, on penalty of being fined if they did not. But in my recent discussion with her, she indicated there are gonna be some fines, period. And then there are gonna be additional fines that can be forgiven if Northland reaches certain corrective targets. So, that's a little more unfortunate than I originally understood they were gonna do. But no details at all. Um, I do have a reminder on the calendar for next Monday that, uh, if we hadn't heard anything, I'm gonna contact them and say, well, it's mid-June, you know, where's the order? They, uh, uh, have expressed that they felt they had, uh, excellent feedback from the city. They, uh, uh, have expressed that they felt they had, uh, excellent feedback from the city and our monitoring reports. Feedback, you know, from citizen complaints and that they were incorporating all that in their findings. And they were addressing the noise issue, which was the primary issue for a long time, and then also the particulate discharge issue. And those are things that they have under their jurisdiction. More recent discussions regarding the odor issue, uh, is not under their jurisdiction. Unless, uh, there's one very limited case, which I think I emailed to the council, I can't remember the, the chemical, but it's kind of a quasicorrosive chemical. That also gives off a bad smell and, uh, that's a significant health issue, so they do monitor that. Something sulfur or something, I haven't remembered. Uh, there you go, thank you, thank you. Uh, but that's the only area of air pollution that they, uh, uh, I should say, odor pollution that they monitor. Any other type of odor, uh, issue, uh, has to be monitored on the local level. And of course, when you get to that, uh, it is, uh, very subjective and, uh. I guess it, it, uh, becomes sort of a community standard issue, it comes under our nuisance ordinance. You know, a bad smell, so what's a bad smell or how bad is the smell? And, uh, it's sort of like, I suppose you could say the old, uh, thing about pornography, it's hard to describe, but you know it when you see it, you know. So this is a bad smell. Yes, yes, but, uh, so what is a bad smell? Well, it's hard to define, but you know it when you smell it, you know, so. But, uh, there, there have been enforcement actions, uh, enforced by the court, uh, at a Wisconsin plant. And it was, I think, an Idaho plant, they were doing exactly the same thing as Northland Drying is. And I had some, I, I tried to track it down, but there was something I remember from many months ago that indicated that this Wisconsin plant that was cited for odors. Shares some of the board of directors of Northland Drying, now, don't quote me on that.
Lisa has all that information.
Was that where it came from? Okay, um, uh, so, you know, I, I guess the reason I mention that, if it's true, is that if they're aware that. You know, there's some forcibility, uh, about bad odors, they can be success- successfully brought by a city in court. Uh, if that happened to them in Wisconsin, I would think it would give us a little more leverage to, uh, negotiate with them for bad smells in our.
Like, okay, so, you know, I used to work for a company where we, we made, uh, we made equipment that made a chemical called chlorine dioxide. The reason I bring this up is because chlorine dioxide is used in like rendering plants and different plants that really stink. And they use a water column and they're just keep constantly putting that chlorine dioxide with the water and that eliminates all odor from coming out. And when they're emitting into the atmosphere, so that this, this will clean that smell up and eliminate it. So I know like Blue Earth has a rendering plant and we had equipment in that plant and I mean, it was, I had to go to the plant once, it was disgusting. And it stunk and the particulate as well, but when they were running this, that, that would take the particulate out, it would go in the water. Then they just keep regenerating, making chlorine dioxide, put it in and, so cities are, and, 'cause I know if they, you know, they had, I don't know if it was a city ordinance or what. That they couldn't be admitting a smell, you know, and they get in trouble with, I know that, but they're always worried about the city. So they must, you must be able to make a smell of it, of it, or something different. But how, how do you do, set those levels? But I know they do it for rendering plants, 'cause that was one of the biggest places that we would do it.
Well, what about fields, what about silage, what about?
Chicken plants, yeah.
What about chickens in the backyard?
I think a lot of the.
Or you make your neighbors having chickens, we just approved one today, I mean, what about those things?
Well, it's not different than everybody having a dog.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, or you're not picking up after your pet, absolutely same way.
No, but those, most of those smells aren't prowling, you know, two miles.
No, but if you live right next door to somebody.
Chicken, chicken.
Chicken plant, yeah, so, yeah.
They don't.
But the smells we're talking about, are we talking the normal daily operation, are we talking what they did last year with stuff hitting?
With rotting, rotting raw product?
Rotting products and then trailers.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, this is the thing, this first.
That's obviously adding this control.
This falls on me to more or less, since Ross says it's a local issue, I will have to take a tour of the plant. I have gathered information, I spent Friday gathering information, plants and, uh, interim permits and things like that to get knowledge of what Northland Drying can, can do. Then it falls on me to take a tour, pretty much inspect the plant, to see what they're doing, make an assessment and then me and Ross have to sit down to figure out what we can do. Because the calls, I can tell you this, in my opinion, this is becoming nuisance from the smell, but I'm getting calls daily to, people are swearing at us. Again, they, people are very angry and granted, I understand people can overreact, but if you're getting calls daily consistently, people complaining about the smell. Particularly when I can walk outside at eleven at night and smell where I'm at very strong, I believe this is a nuisance. Basically off what our ordinance state, this is a clear nuisance. But Ross does make a good point, it goes back to how do we address it, but I think we got to that point where it's a clear nuisance.
A lot, I always have south winds lately that should push it, but, you know, just further over and, I'll play that with that in there. If we're gonna introduce that for the business in Arlington and then a Dole's feed yard starts sticking, I know there's a handful of people in town. That are gonna ask us to take action against that.
I'm aware of that as well, so this is why this, I, I actually, I'm glad you brought that up because I have, I'm aware of that as well. And this is why I am kind of tiptoeing around it to try to figure out what would be the best approach, 'cause there, it's gonna open up.
We've never done anything on one of those pit still can, it's not.
No, no.
Reg, it was coming out of the sewers.
Yeah, that was worse, far worse.
I mean, that's why I just.
The, 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 the call is on, I live, I'm not Richard Miller, but my wife does work there and I do know what it, she smells like, I don't know, however. At a common sense looking at it approach, the artist, is the smell making people sick that they're calling it? And, and not just, oh, I don't feel good because of whatever, it's an actual chronic, I have to go to the doctor and, you know, the.
That's.
Well, I would say it's a, you know, you're, maybe you wanna go out and, this is me personally, I've been able to go out and still do my thing, but it's like, well, do I really wanna go out and smell that? You know, and that, that's my assumption, that people are, do I go enjoy my backyard or, or do I sit in an house instead of, uh, on the burning day?
Joe is right, this is, like I said, this is why it falls on me is because given I, I have to assess the complaints, I also have to assess of what this will cause. Given if we go after this, then like I said, this will open up Pandora's box to other things, particularly from what I've researched and things like that, given past events, what we have done. Like I said, this is, it's not an easy solution, I can be completely honest with you on a planning level, zoning level, this is not easy. And I, I've been telling people I need time to actually research this and try to figure out a game.
Let's see what happens when, with the findings, I'm, I'm interested to hear what the findings are gonna be from.
They are adding another dryer.
Yeah.
So the city should also work with them, right? So, I mean, well, that's, one thing is with them, is their public perception, right? So, you know, for them, researching and figuring out something that helps, I know that, you know, the canopy you brought up, they're also.
Well, I, I actually, I actually stopped, I actually stopped there when I was still selling that equipment, 'cause I used to work with them where I was selling it. And I just stopped down there when I had seen all this coming up and I just gave my card and said, you know, I could talk to you about a solution for your smell and the particles, but I never got a call from anyone.
But it's, it's about funding, right? So they're, I would consider them still a startup and.
Right, but I just wanted to talk to them.
They have a lot of capital and they gotta, they gotta produce funding in order to get their, provide for their customers and then, you know.
Yeah, but the thing is, that's the solution I was talking about, it's only gonna help if they're emitting through one, oh, stack or something, but it fits stuff laying in the yard that.
Well, personally, my con- my concern is a raw product that isn't, that is laying out in the open and rotting, that's my concern. 'Cause I don't think they're, I think if you look back to their, uh, conditional use, whatever, they're not allowed to have that.
So we think that's today.
I, I have heard that they had a break, I heard they had a breakdown in equipment, but the raw product kept coming, they had to pile it up. Well, my thought is if they gotta pile it up someplace, pick a pa- place somewhere out in the country to pile it up.
Well, this is the thing, they did propose to create a temporary storage facility for that. Um, just, like I said, I stress temporary, however, problem is, under the zoning code, that would be considered an accessory structure. And therefore, as, as you know what I stated, I have no authority over that and that is what a building code issue based off what the code presents in I two districts. So, but at the same time, I need to inspect every, uh, I need to go in and inspect it to get a better assessment. Like I said, before I do that, I wanna get a basic idea of how everything's laid out, because I don't want them to give me the runaround, that's the core, um, issue.
Good.
I, I did receive a, you know, basically a, uh, be called a complaint or an application, something like that.